Hey, thank you. And welcome to the special meeting on Tuesday, April 12th of the Providence City Plan Commission. We will start by calling this session to order and taking a roll call. Let's go around the room, starting with Manuel. Here.
Harry Delago.
Noel Sanchez. We have Choiyan.
Oh, present Choiyan Mandrake, our DPD staff.
Michael Geszczak, oh Chair.
Bob is our staff.
Kelly Morris Salvatore Council.
Thank you. We have, the last meeting was March 15th. Minutes from that meeting have been circulated previewed prior to this meeting. Has everyone reviewed them and had a chance to make sure that they are accurate? If so, we would take a motion to approve the minutes from the March 15th meeting.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of March 15th, 2020. Excellent minutes.
Thank you, Harry. We have a motion by Harry. Do we have a second? Second, we have a second by Manuel. All right. Let's just take a yea or nay vote. All in favor say yea.
Yea.
Yea. All opposed, abstain, and the minutes are approved. Next, we move on to the director's report. Mr. Azar. Just about that. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, I want to welcome our newest member, Noel Sanchez. Glad to have you with us. With that, we have a full complement of seven board members. Noel, do you want to just say hi and introduce yourself, maybe a little bit about who you are, how long you've been around and so forth?
So Noel Sanchez, I've been around Providence for 35 years. The rest is, you know, speculation. Been around for a bit longer than that, but I live in the South Providence now. I used to live in the West End. I own a contracting company that does mostly residential renovations in the city. Large family, yeah. There's a lot more I can say, but good for an introduction.
Okay. Okay, and the other thing is, you know, as you all know, we've been fretting a little bit in the planning department about how busy things are. We're constantly trying to stay on top of all the applications that are coming through and we appreciate your working with us. We're gonna have another meeting back here next Tuesday with a full docket. And May is looking busy as well, so stay tuned. Things do kind of drop off from time to time, but things also come back on, so. You know, we'll be in touch about about May. I don't want to say we're gonna need a special meeting, but I don't want to say we won't either. So just kind of a, kind of a little hint that that we'll be in touch about scheduling soon, so that should do it. Thank you, Bob. Then let's open up our meeting agenda and we will go to the first item, which is a city council referral, referral number 3510. 828 Charles Street. Choiyan, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, so commissioners, this is a request for a zone change at 828 Charles Street. Now, this portion of Charles Street is on R2, but there are a number of commercial and mixed-use areas that you can observe. Properties that you can observe in this area. And so the petitioner owns a mixed-use property in the R2 zone. And they are requesting to rezonate to C3, which is, which is the zoning that you see on parts of the street so that they can have mixed use and other, and possibly multifamily within the structure. I am. The applicant did say they were attending, so I'm not sure if they're attending virtually or if they are in the audience.
Just let the record show that Chris Potter has joined us right before the introduction of that agenda item. Mr. Chair, there with me just a second here. I want to see if if there is, if there is anybody in the room or anybody online here on behalf of the applicant, Bethany Martone, Daniel Navado, this is for 828 Charles Street. If you happen to be calling in, you can press star nine to raise your virtual hand or use the raise hand function at the bottom of your screen. Okay, we do have, we do have somebody on the phone. Okay. So the person who's dialing in. You can, okay.
Hello.
Hello.
We're here.
Okay, please identify yourself. We can hear you.
I'm Daniel Navado. I'm Daniel Navado. I'm one of the owners.
And Bethany Martone.
Thank you. Could you just maybe explain for the record what it is that's currently happening on the property? And what you're looking to do with the property and why you're asking for it to be rezoned to C3?
So it's currently a mixed-use building that we're converting to condos. And we'd like to add additional affordable housing on the side of it to add to the condo complex.
And Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as this is, right now it's zoned R2, which doesn't allow for mixed use. It doesn't allow for any more than two dwelling units on a lot. This is already a non-conforming building. Bethany or Daniel, could you say how many units there are currently in the building?
There are three units in the building.
So it's already non-conforming. It is on a commercial corridor that is that is actually largely zoned C3 already. I'm gonna just pull this up so you can, let's see. Unfortunately, that's not showing. It's not showing on our screen. Not sure how to do that. Sorry about that.
If you're facing the building, the building to the left is already commercial. And then the building, two buildings to the right is owned commercial also.
So you can, you can see, you can see this section of Charles Street here on the screen. This is the lot and then we've got C3 both to the, to the right, which is north and to the south as well. So not, but when you have a situation like this where you have a corridor that is, that is zoned like this and you have non-conforming uses. This is typically a very good candidate for a rezoning.
What is the size of the lot?
That's a good question. It's a, it's about 12,000 square feet.
1,600.
And how many units more are going on? How many additional units will be on?
An additional four to five.
I think that's, that's pretty much, that's pretty much all we have. Obviously, we have our staff report as well. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for the applicant before Choiyan reads the staff report?
Just a question. So actually leave that up, sorry about, just a question regarding that. So I see that it's currently R2 and it's in an R2 zone. What's the yellow here and why is the other side of the street not similarly commercial along Charles Street?
Yeah, so the other side of Charles Street is actually R1, that, that other yellow color. And, you know, it's always a bit of a mystery as to why the zoning is what it is. You know, in many respects, zoning was imposed long after, long after the city was developed. So it's only, sometimes it can only be an approximation of, of what's there. And then on top of it, you have all sorts of non-conforming uses and uses by variance. And Charles Street is, is one of those corridors where you do have a bit of a mix of uses. You have a lot of houses that are right up against the street. Some have been converted to commercial on the ground floor. You see this on a lot of streets like Douglas or Admiral or something like that where it's not sort of consistent commercial the whole way. But it's definitely a, you know, it's definitely a, what I, a street that I would consider to be a commercial corridor. So we should probably, you know, in an ideal world, maybe this, this entire corridor should have some sort of commercial or mixed-use zoning along it, but it's just not the way it is today. Thank you. Harry, Chris, anything for the applicant? Okay, with that, thank you very much. We will have Choiyan read the staff report and we'll open it up to public comment thereafter.
Sure, and commissioners, as you saw on the map, this is an area of Charles Street that's zone R2. It is in proximity to the C3 zone. And this rezoning would incorporate the subject lot into the C3 zone. And it is already non-conforming, so we believe that it will be appropriate and in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Since the future land use map says that this is an area where you see general commercial in proximity to medium-density residential development. And the lot with rezoning of the lot would be appropriate, given the current uses. And it would be in conformance with the purposes of zoning. And we don't expect it to negatively affect health, safety and welfare. And based on that, we recommend that you make a positive recommendation to the city council.
Okay, you try on. With that, we will open it up to public comment. If anyone here in the audience would like to comment on this agenda item. You can feel free to step up to the lectern here, or if you're joining us virtually, please raise your virtual hand at the bottom of the screen or press star nine if you are calling in. And we are, we are seeing none. So with that, we will close the public comment portion of this and we will move on to deliberation. Mr. Sanchez.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Customary to rezone the lot before a development plan is presented.
It's a good question. I'll be happy to take that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it is a good question, so, so it can actually happen both ways. The, especially if, if if there's a, if there's a land development project, which is a larger project that is 10 or more dwelling units or 10,000 or more square feet of floor area. State law says that if it's customary to come in with a preliminary plan showing what your general concept is in conjunction with your zoning change. So that the commission can, can consider both the development and the zoning change at the same time. With something like this, this is a, what they're talking about doing is a relatively small development. It would not trigger review by this board. So in this case, if, if they get the zoning change and they want to move forward with the expansion that they were talking about. They, they might be subject to a review by, at the staff level, but not at, at the commission level. It wouldn't be that big of a, of a project. So, you know, in, in a case like this, you know, it is a, it's a, it's a logical question to ask. And, you know, I suppose it's possible that, that they might get the zoning change and not move forward with that particular project. That, that certainly could happen. So. And then the zone change is forever with the property, whereas, you know, the development plan for that current use could change. So we have to look at it as, as a holistic zone change. Does it, does it meet the, the intent of the comprehensive plan? And does it make good planning practice? And that's what we're doing here today for, for a recommendation to the city council, because they'll ultimately vote on it.
So it would leave one lot on that corridor with an R2, R2 zoning.
And we've asked about continuing that zoning beyond that in other instances, and we normally don't suggest that. It usually takes the property owner asking for, for a rezoning or a citywide rezoning for that to occur.
Well, you know, I think Noel raised a great point. And I'd like to just take a minute and hear from you all about this question of making a zoning change like this without any, without really much of an indication of what the development is gonna look like. It's a wonderful point. It's a point I think that's always bothered me and I love the fact that he brought it up on his very first visit. That shows great signs of optimism, but what, what, what is, you said if it were more than 12 units, then there would be a review?
What is it? 10, 10 or more.
10, 10 units or 10,000 square feet, I think.
Or 10,000 square feet of new development. But it will, but, but in a, in a commercial zone, something of this size would, would be subject to what we call, it's a, it's a staff level development plan review. And, and, you know, the, the zoning ordinance has regulations governing how things can be built. So, you know, the presumption is that if, if this zoning change happens and they were to come in with a project, they would have to conform to the zoning ordinance.
Well, I'm sure it would conform to zoning. I'm just thinking about aesthetics, I guess. And you know, it's a concern. I mean, we say, go ahead, do it, and that, but so so Mr. Navado and, and this Martone are gonna have to, they will have to present the plan to you or not to the planning board?
Not to the planning board, but, but to the planning department.
To the planning department.
And, you know, aesthetics. Aesthetics are certainly important, but, you know, as you know, we have, we have some regulations around design. But outside of a historic district or outside of downtown. We don't strictly have a, a kind of subjective design review process.
Can I interrupt for a second? When we spoke to our architect, he had suggested a townhouse style garage underneath for parking. And it would fit in with most of the surrounding neighborhood. It wouldn't be an overly obnoxious commercial building.
No, I didn't mean that you build a commercial building or obnoxious building. I only am just interested in the fact that, that, you know, I guess we approve these things and I'd sort of like to know what they looked like after our approval, that's all. And if there was any way to review that, that's, that's, I guess I would love to be able to review the development to, to really, to quote Noel, just I'd like to see the development with the change, that's all.
But this, this, this proposed development doesn't meet the threshold for our review, correct? That's correct. Yeah, so, so.
So I have a lower threshold than you do.
Not me, it's the, the town, the town zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan and, and the land use regulations.
And the threshold, how do we modify the threshold, Kelly?
You can change your regulations.
Oh my God.
The city, well, you'd have to go.
Coming on. No, I think.
Let's put the triggers for land development.
Okay, yeah, then it'd have to be by ordinance. I thought your triggers were in the land development regulations, because they can be. But Bob's telling me they're all in the zoning ordinance, so it would have to be an ordinance that's approved by the council.
Now, that would mean that you'd have more projects coming in front of you.
I'm tough, you know.
You ready for three meetings in one day?
Sure. Ready to rock and roll. Well, thank you. It's, it really is something to think about, I think.
Any other discussion from any of the other commissioners? No, okay. It's a pretty straightforward recommendation that we get regularly from the city council, asking us to review. And just to affirm that it is good planning practice to approve this. Again, we're not approving it. We're just giving a recommendation to the city council. There will likely be two votes at the city council to make this zone change occur. So I, I for want of, see nothing of issue with this zone change. And I guess we'd be looking for a motion to approve a recommendation based on the, thank you, Chris, based on the, the staff report and the, the recommendation. Well, so we have a first from Chris. We have a second from Noel. Let's open up to a vote. I'll go around in a circle. Chris, I, thank you. Noel, I, Harry, I, Manuel, I, and I vote I. The recommendation will be sent to the city council. Our next agenda item is a minor subdivision, case number 22-014MI177 Burndale Ave.
Commissioners, a quick introduction before we hear from the applicant. This is a request for a minor subdivision of the lot that measures approximately 11,080 square feet. The applicant would like to subdivide it into two lots of 5,878 and 5,202 square feet. It's located in the R1 zone. And if you look at the plan, you will see that the site is occupied by a house and a four-car garage. So in order to have the lot line avoid passing through the garage, the lot width of the lot width of the lots would be 55 and 45 feet. And so the applicant will need an administrative modification to subdivide the lot as proposed. And the purpose of this is to subdivide and build a second dwelling on the lot. And so I guess we have the applicant here and they can tell you more about the subdivision. And if they could also, I request that they also speak about the tree, the issue of the tree on the lot.
All right. My name is Maritza Gomez. I reside at 177 Burndale Avenue. And the purpose for the division is to build on the second lot. There's also a tree in the middle and I've spoken to, what's his name from forestry? Thank you, Doug. And Doug went and he said it was okay because it had to be removed. It's in the way. It's right smack in the middle of the lot. So we don't have any problems with that so far. What else did you want to know?
Just a little background on your intentions, obviously.
Okay, I've been on the property. I, I own two properties, right? Almost back to back then, next to each other. And I've been on the property for 18 years. I pretty much have doused my life into the property. So I'm actually trying to build and make use of it. I felt like I didn't even make use of that lot. It just stood there. You would park it in the house and get out, and I think it would be a good situation.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
So I, I guess I'm curious about the four-car garage and it ends up in the, in this new lot. And the access presumably would be from that driveway on the right?
Yes. Well, you're saying for the new proposed or the, the current, the existing?
Yeah, for, for the proposed. So this is showing here a proposed dwelling and a driveway on the right.
That would be the proposed driveway on the right.
But it, it's not going all the way to the garage, but presumably it's, it would, or is the intent for the garage?
I would say, because it's, there's cement. It's already all cemented and it's, so by the time you finish the garage here, it'll ride right onto the cement area that's there.
And right now the access to that garage is, is through?
That proposed dwelling in the middle there.
You can see the hashed out concrete driveway on the under.
And, and there's a tree somewhere between that driveway.
Right by that, it looked like from the Google Maps, right by that curve in the concrete. Any other commissioners with questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Well, I have one more question. I'm sorry. It didn't even dawn on me. I never thought about it. But it's actually zoned residential one, R1. But there are other supposedly buildings there or houses that have been converted to two, three, four units, whatever. Is it a possibility if I decide to change from one to two? Is that something that's been done also?
Not tonight.
Oh, no, I, I heard that. I was just, it was just, I had a question because I never thought about it that way.
That would be a separate application to the city council.
All right.
You'd probably want to speak with the land use attorney and have them submit it on your behalf for a zone change. That would be a zone change.
All right. I just had to mention it since I was listening to all the previous things.
Mr. Chair. Given, given that this is a, this is an R1 zone and you're, you're in the middle of an R1 zone. It's a little bit different when you're on like a, a commercial corridor where, where you've got commercial in proximity, or if you're adjacent to another higher density zone. Given the fact that, that you're surrounded by R1. I haven't looked at our comprehensive plan map, but, but the comprehensive plan surely is gonna show that this is a single family. I haven't looked at our comprehensive plan map, but but the comprehensive plan surely is going to show that this is a single family area. And any zoning change would have to be consistent with uh the comprehensive plan, so. In a case like this, I I don't think that um there would be justification to rezone just this one lot. It might be helpful to uh to put, share this screen so that everyone can see the zoning.
Yeah, because there's one across and the big one that has five units.
Yeah, so 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 non-conforming properties are allowed to continue to exist. But um that 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 can't serve as a as justification for for another departure.
They're kind of like grandfathered into the situation.
That's right, yeah. Did you have any other questions?
All set, thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will have Choi on read the staff report.
Or commissioners, so given that this property is located in an area that the future land use map is designated for low density. Residential development, the subdivision would result in a lot that would. Conform to that designation as it would allow for the development that the plan intends. As far as the zoning ordinance goes, as you've seen, the plans meet the lots, each lot meets the minimum lot area. However, Lot Two will will not provide the required width of. Will not provide the required width of fifty feet, so the applicant may need to, will need to apply for an administrative modification in order to finalize the subdivision. We talked about the significant tree and it is my understanding that the city forester has said that it may come down. However, we would require some sort of communication from the forester in order to make that final. Also, the existing four-car garage will be the sole accessory structure on a separate lot should the subdivision be approved. So the applicant will need to provide us with plans for new development on the newly created lot. Prior to final plan approval, so that you do not have an accessory structure on a separate lot. We don't foresee a negative environmental impact. And subject to the applicant. Obtaining new plans for the second lot or removing the garage, we don't foresee any impediments to development. And vehicular and pedestrian access will be provided from Burn Dale Ave. So based on that, we recommend that you vote to approve the preliminary plan. Subject to these conditions that the applicant either remove the garage or obtain a building permit for a new structure prior to final plan approval. That the city forester communicate his findings on the existing tree prior to. Prior to final plan approval. And the applicant shall obtain an administrative modification for the forty-five foot lot width. And then, as usual, we ask that the ability of the preliminary plan be extended to one year from the date of recording of the approval letter. And that final plan be delegated to DPD staff.
Okay, thank you, Choi. With that, we will open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience here? Today or on our virtual audience that would wish to comment on this application? Which is agenda item number two, one seventy-seven Burn Dale Avenue. If you're joining us virtually, again, raise your virtual hand at the bottom portion of your screen or press star nine if you're calling in. Now, we are, we are seeing none, so with that, we will close the public comment portion of this agenda item. And move on to commission deliberations. Any discussion amongst the commissioners on this item?
The setbacks seem tight on the garage, three foot seven.
Yeah, it's so garages may be set to the lot line. Garages can be set to the lot line, so a three-foot side yard setback is acceptable.
Detached, specifically detached garages are allowed to be on the lot line. If it's a, if it's an attached garage, that's a, that's separate, but. This this complies.
And so I'm um. Being an accessory structure looks awfully something, building something there. You know, I know we've been, well, I've seen in-law apartments and all that kind of stuff going into separate garages, but.
You have?
Yes, but we won't say what.
Right now, that that's actually, that's actually something that 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 is up for debate. As we speak at the general assembly to to expand the ability to create accessory dwelling units and in outbuildings. Right now, we allow it under under very. Strict circumstances, but but you know, it's not inconceivable that something like that could be an accessory. Dwelling unit at some point in the future, if if the law changes. But in its current iteration, we would, we would assume that they get a building permit and. Get final inspections, which would deem that it wouldn't be an accessory dwelling unit this time. You could use, you could use an outbuilding like that as as sort of a recreation room or for for other purposes unrelated to to. You know, a dwelling unit, but but you couldn't, you couldn't use it as a dwelling unit as it stands. Currently, yeah.
And then one more question on the setbacks on the house. It's a three-foot one setback to the porch or the access on the side. From the three-foot one, from the division line to proposed division line to the stairway. Like a patio? Looks like it shows steps.
It says three foot one to stone steps, uh that would be. That's actually a good. It's actually a good question. Five-three to the structure, but to the stone steps, which is an entry to the. Yeah, I I think that it's a, I think that it's a unallowable encroachment. But. Bear with me on that for a minute.
Yeah, steps can, steps are required to be four feet from all lot lines.
The three-foot one.
That's gonna have to be adjusted, I think. Yep, bear bear with us just for a second. These are all very good catches. Your first meeting. It's why we're excited for you to come come on board.
Fire ratings and all that.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right, yes. So so the 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 building itself is.
Five foot three.
Yeah, but it's it's actually eight, eight foot three, and then there's a, then there's a a bay.
Bay window, yeah.
So the bay, the bay is allowed to encroach three feet into. A side, and this is called an interior side lot line, this new lot line. So a bay window is allowed to encroach three feet, so that's that's just there. And then steps and stoops. Roofed or unroofed, includes support posts, are allowed to encroach six feet into interior side lot lines. Interior side yards. So it's it's encroaching. Eight point three minus three point one is five, it's encroaching five point two feet. So that would be, that would be permitted encroachment. Very good. Thank you for that clarification, Bob.
Sorry, awfully close to the fire rating as well, five foot on the bay window.
So so I um. I'm not an expert in the in the building code. I do know that that there are some regulations that that relate to how close windows can be. To lot lines, uh and the farther from the lot line you get, the more blazing you can have. You you may know that better than I.
I thought five foot um was required for a. For a fire, non-fire rated wall. For a fire rated one, so the same is pretty close. It does conform, I think, by three inches.
Is that to lot line or to to another structure?
The fire rated walls, if it was. Under five feet, the four feet, you'd have to be a fire rated.
Right. So this being five-three would probably just, just be over.
Yeah, and I don't know if roof roof lines count. Overhang on the bay window and stuff like that.
Then someone the the building commissioner would have to. Oh, oh, uh, so so I don't know. I mean, I think I I think when it comes to the building code, it's the actual, it's the actual window itself. Not the, not the overhang of the bay.
Right, well, it's the wall and everything you build in that space. Not an expert on that, but I run into it.
So so what what I could suggest is that if if this is a concern of yours, they do have. There's seven feet to to this other proposed dwelling. Now, that location of the proposed dwelling. That's speculative at this point. It doesn't, doesn't have to be exactly there. It doesn't have to be exactly twenty-four feet wide. Where that proposed new lot line is could move a little bit. It could even jog. Uh, we don't require our lot lines to be perfectly straight, so if if that had to jog. To to be offset from that bay, uh in order to comply with the building code, it could do that. And it could even jog back a little bit in the back to to maintain the the area. They've got enough. They've got enough lot area uh for each, as long as you're above five thousand square feet, and they've got ample for each of these lots. That they they could manipulate those lot lines slightly to 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 make sure that they conform. So if if you like, that could be a condition of approval that uh they consult with. The building official relative to the location of the proposed lot line. And the bay. To comply with the building code, and if necessary, that lot line could be adjusted. I would also add, just while we're at it. The. The uh the applicant talked about the driveway continuing to the garage. That's not shown on this plan. Again, it doesn't, doesn't have to be shown on the plan, uh but if the intention is to preserve. The existing uh sort of apron in front of the four-car garage. That could create a zoning issue in the future because it might result in too much impervious surface in the rear yard. But that's a zoning issue that that she's gonna have to deal with down the line when she comes in with the plan for the new house. That that'll have, that'll be. That'll be sort of the next step, um and and uh we certainly wouldn't support any kind of variance for excessive paving. Because, you know, they're creating their own hardship, so to speak. But but that's, that's not really for you. That's not, that's not on the table for you to to uh address at this point. And the recommendations were that they have the proposed. Layout for this. Lot two prior to DPD staff approval of the final subdivision. Yeah, and and in fact, and in fact, they're they're either gonna have to demolish the the garage. Or get a building permit for the new house before they finalize that this subdivision. So that would, that building for the new house would include all of the zoning issues that they'd have to comply with. So that doesn't, none of that needs to be a condition of approval now, but you should, you should know that. They're gonna have to demonstrate that down the line, but I think what what Mr. Sanchez raises about. Compliance with the building code, it's it's a good point. It's not, it's not a zoning issue per se, but if you wanted. If you want to include in your approval that they have a little bit of flexibility to adjust that lot line prior to final plan approval. In order to comply with the building code, if necessary, I think that's perfectly appropriate. Sounds like a prudent prudent step.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll support that.
Um, any other commissioners have any uh discussion they would like to bring forward on this? Not to cut you off, Noel, if you had anything else, we're we're still open to deliberation.
Well, about the tree, just to say, because in the, I know the new requirements for. For permitting then require a landscaping plan that would supposedly address the issue of tree coverage.
That's right, that's right. That'll have to be part of the new. Okay. I like, I like Noel's additional recommendation. Other than that, I I think this one. Is pretty teed up. Unless we have any other discussion, I think it's time for a motion.
Make a motion.
So we we have a motion from Noel, and that would be based on the the testimony, the staff report and the recommendations, including. Your additional recommendation to confer with the building official about the. The side yard setbacks prior to the final plan and adjusting lot lines if needed.
Yeah.
Perfect. That count? All right, we have a second from Chris. We have a motion on the table. We'll go around in order. Chris. Noel, I, Harry, I, Manuel. I, and I vote I. Motion carries. And good luck. We will move on to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number three of public informational meeting, a major land development project. And it is for case number twenty-two dash zero one two MA one eighty-nine to two hundred Swan Street. And the app camp is Anthony Colletta. AJ, are you logged in as the Coletta group?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, you're gonna wanna turn your microphone off. Uh, mute your microphone so it doesn't feedback.
Sure.
Okay, I can, I can bring him in as well.
What about uh?
Yeah, you can do that. Yeah, you can do that.
And commissioners, I can provide an introduction. So this, you're probably familiar with the site because we made a recommendation for street abandonments. Earlier, I believe sometime last year, and so the applicant is back and they wish to construct two buildings. Which in, which in totality will exceed ten thousand square feet. One building is, will offer approximately fifty-five hundred square feet. And the other will offer approximately eleven thousand square feet. They are located in the MMU seventy-five zone, and they will be additions. To existing commercial structures. And the the area for this development was, part of it was created when Swan Street that was running through. This area was abandoned, so the applicant will be telling you about the additions in relation to the existing development. And we'll also be talking about parking, parking, landscaping, and associated site improvements. In doing so, they will be also requesting a dimensional adjustment. Because one of the buildings requires sixteen spaces, but they will be providing nine. So I think the applicant will be talking more about that. During their presentation, and yeah, I think I'll turn it over to them and they can tell you more.
Attorney Gary.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, John Garrity on behalf of the applicant Coletta Group. I don't know if you were, we're in witnesses.
I don't believe this, this is not a zoning variant, so we customarily don't do that.
Okay, it's a public information meeting with. So let me, let me get started. AJ Coletta and his family have have really taken this project to heart. They've taken, it's taken several years to accumulate these properties, and as we're gonna be describing, really doing good in this area. This commission, I know there are some new members that are here. This commission, I know there are some new members that are here, may not have been familiar with it, but this has been a process. Even before I was involved in it, they've accumulated these properties. And as many of you know, you know, you know, I'm, I'm sixty-three years old, and I think the ninety-five came into existence just about when I was born in nineteen fifty-eight. So essentially, this area was dead-ended by ninety-five when it came in and essentially had left that area abandoned and, and blighted because it's, it's a, it's dead-ended over there. And, and as you know, if you're on Allen's Avenue, Swan Street and Sale Street run on the other side of it. But they're cut off as you come up Allen's, and if you go down this way, you can't get to it. So this was an abandoned piece of property that, um, essentially breeds crime and blight in this area. And what this is, it's not sexy. It's not, you know, it's industrial commercial land. But I think planning is the appropriate uses in the appropriate locations. And, and I, I think that's exactly what's going on here. He's taking this development and putting it to good use and take away the blight and the crime that occurs here. And you'll see AJ will make a presentation. And when I talk about blight and crime, he'll, you'll see that. And essentially turning it into productive job creating, um, uses. Some months ago, um, these two streets, Sales, uh, was never opened up. And it was, it was never used for anything, was not the street because as I said, it went down to ninety-five and ended there. Swan Street essentially was opened up, but essentially it was a dead end that went right into ninety-five. And, you know, it's an area that was not productive in any respect. So I don't, I don't want to, AJ has a presentation, a very good graphic presentation to allow you to see it. Brad Travers is our engineer. He's on, on with us from Waterman Engineering, can describe some of the engineering aspects of it. There is also, as Troyan mentioned, a parking adjustment because of the, 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 the lack of the required parking for the animal facility, which is located on, on the facility already. And so we'll talk a little bit of, of that in detail, but I don't wanna, I want AJ to present you the presentation and show it again. It's commercial uses in the right place, right project, job creating projects that really is appropriately placed. So, um, that's, that's it. We can go into zoning, the adjustments and all of those types of things. But AJ, uh, uh, I, I'll let you make your presentation with respect to your project.
Thank you, John. I have notes, I'm just going through my notes here. Start with a map of the area. So this is Eddie Street, a quarter of a mile between Rhode Island Hospital, which is up here where my cursor is.
AJ, uh, would you mind just speaking into the microphone?
Yes, happy to do that. Sure. Is that better?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Okay, great. Again, AJ Coletta, one eighty-nine through two hundred Swan Street, Providence, Rhode Island. The area again is Swan Street, the main area Swan Street here, which is just off Eddie Street. Uh, many people know that there's a Dunkin' Donuts on the corner of Swan and Eddie. Our portion of Swan Street is west of ninety-five. There's also an area of Swan down here on Allen's. Uh, that's not our area. Ours is right here. We have, uh, we recently took ownership of portions of Swan in Sale Street. So here, starting, let me zoom in just a little bit here. From here all the way down to the end where it terminates, we were able to, uh, abandon that and get ownership of that as part of our campus. And as John mentioned, Sale Street, which is this paper street, unimproved street from here, essentially here, all the way down to the end. So this helps, uh, add some square footage to our, our campus. Uh, we have two buildings that we currently own and manage and have rent leased. We have three tenants. One is Crossbones Dog Academy here. And then we have the compost plant and U S Ecology. All three tenants, uh, are fully permitted, uh, to be in this area. And they're looking forward to the growth of the business park with the two new buildings that we're going to add here. Uh, their businesses are robust and they would really like to expand into a bigger footprint. Uh, and I'm going to talk about that in a little bit. But again, these two buildings are what we currently manage. This is eight thousand square feet. This is eighty-four hundred square feet. A tenant, so I'll tell you a bit about that. Uh, this is a website that I put together, informational website for the instances where we're in front of the city council and want to know more about it. Uh, this is swanpvd.com. It's just an open website. This is a, an older rendering of what the campus would look like. Again, this is our current building here, uh, two current buildings. There are billboards that are bought us in face ninety-five. This is ninety-five north and south going this way. Uh, this does include the tree canopy plan, which I will talk about in a bit. As I scroll down, talks a little bit about our vision. It's to develop this industrial park to offer businesses a secure location to grow and thrive. Not only the current businesses that we have there, but if we have additional space available, we'd like to make it available to commercial and industrial, uh, tenants. And again, it's just a quarter of a mile between Eddie Street and the Thurgers Avenue, north and south on ramps. Uh, as John mentioned, the work, there's, there's work to be done. The, it's a rough area. We've done our best to clean up some of the, uh, vacant lots that were there. There is only one residence on this portion of Swan Street. And unfortunately, it gets a lot of illegal activity. I'm showing you actual photos of the house. It's covered with bullet holes. Uh, John can speak to this. Uh, he's better equipped to speak to it. A lot of trash and blight. It is the only residence on this street. It's completely surrounded by industrial and commercial. Uh, we used to own, and John, I haven't mentioned this to you, we used to own a home right across from it, one ninety-seven Swan. And we had difficulty managing it, so we needed to condemn it and take it down because we knew we wanted to change the culture here. So this area needs improvement, and we're ready to do just that. Here's John's quote. Businesses, we have three fantastic businesses. One is Crossbones Dog Academy. Uh, that is at one eighty-nine Swan Street. They occupy the entire eight thousand square foot building. And, uh, this will be brought up that the, is it the adjustment, the parking adjustment? That'll be part of the parking adjustment. So, uh, they've been with us for almost five years now, four or five years. Their zoning is applicable to the area, and they are looking to, uh, stay, if not expand their footprint. And a little bit more about it, they, they, they're actually not an animal care facility. They're a training facility. Uh, they don't do vet services or anything like that or boarding. They are a training facility. And John can speak to that as well.
Well, I can speak to it because my dog was a, a, I, I used to say graduate, but, um, I attended the facility. They trained him, and, uh, I think we gotta return.
Our next tenant is the compost plant. Great service that they offer. They pick up food scraps and waste from all over the state, actually New England now, and they turned it into compost. And they have these fantastic, uh, vehicles that they've created that allow them to pick up food waste from colleges, hospitals, private institutions. And they've, I think there's a neat little, uh, you can see there on the east side here. As of January twenty-twenty-one, they've diverted nearly twenty thousand tons of organic waste from the landfill. And, uh, the location is perfect for what they do. I know that Providence has a lot of, um, residential food waste pickup services. This is actually one of the services. And they collect in South Providence using, you know, just bicycles and these carts. Uh, they pick it up and they bring it right to the compost plant. A lot of Washington Park residents, uh, use this service. So it's, it's a wonderful, they're a wonderful tenant to have, and they're looking to expand as well. Uh, take over one of the buildings that they're currently in. And U S Ecology, an environment, a national environmental company that helps businesses reduce their carbon footprint. Uh, they don't do the disposal. They don't do this at Swan Street. Uh, they basically do, um, assembly, that kind of thing. And I'll talk about that in a bit when we go over the, uh, the zoning that was solidified. Park info, so it'll be comprised of four buildings, over thirty-six thousand square feet for lease inflex style buildings. And I do have some renderings to fly you through the campus. Total footprint is approximately two and a quarter acres, which includes Swan and Sale Street. Zone MMU seventy-five, again, located, uh, just off Eddie Street. And, uh, these renderings are available. If you want to see them, uh, you can click and see the larger version of that. Uh, the area being dangerous, uh, it is indeed that. I'll go over this briefly. The obstacle, the challenge that we have is really, the sole residence. And this is recent. I was able to get this from the Providence Police, uh, two days ago, yesterday, actually. Is this zooming? You can see that, right? In November, there was a shooting. Uh, one of the tenants on the first floor was shot and rushed to Rhode Island Hospital. Uh, this is all from two oh nine Swan Street, the lone residence that's there. This is not made up. This is, go ahead, John, you want to speak to that?
So, so we are working diligently, and I will say AJ has been working diligently to try to purchase this property. And we're working with the P R A. If that does, doesn't work, but you know, the, the, this area is not appropriate for, for residential living. And it's so secluded that, as I said, it encourages blight and crime. And that this isn't exactly, exactly what happens. And so, so we are working very hard to try to purchase this property. We may come back before you hopefully and include that within this development. But unfortunately, as I indicated, um, this is, this, this is a problem. And hopefully we can resolve it and incorporate it within this, uh, commercial park.
Thank you, John. Uh, next up, the new buildings. Now I'm going to the master plan. And, um, I'll go to the first sheet of the master plan here, created by Brad from Waterman Engineering. Brad, you're, you're online, correct? I think he is. If we want to add him in, I guess we can, inappropriate. I'll take you through.
He's in the meeting.
Okay, I'm taking you through, okay, so the butters list, the two proposed buildings, let's zoom in a little further here. This is Swan Street, so north of Swan Street here. This is proposed fifty-five hundred square foot, fifty-five eighty-eight, okay, uh, metal flex style building, very similar to what we have here. And he has the parking arrangement set up. South of Swan is this, let me zoom out here. South is the eleven thousand square foot building with dual loading docks that you can see here. We recently did an administrative subdivision where we merged multiple lots into two parcels. So you have parcel X, which is north, uh, including Swan Street and the easement. And parcel Y, which is south of Swan, which includes Sale Street and our portion of Sale Street here. We don't have possession of the entire street. Our butter has possession of that, including the easement. Uh, uses and size, heights and materials. So uses would be similar to what, uh, the uses that are here, which would be industrial light, industrial general for these two new buildings. Size, uh, we have the footprint. The height would be approximately twenty feet, which I know is well below what's allowed, which I think is seventy-five feet. Is that correct? Okay, I'm trying. Thank you. So we need that. Materials, uh, that I wanted to talk about, I know in section A point three, for campus developments, a distinct visual link shall be established among various buildings using architectural or site design elements. Our current buildings are corrugated metal with some metal, uh, flashing and, uh, because, uh, enhancements. We wanted to keep that. I understand there are some guidelines regarding corrugated metal, but we did want some consistency. And this is where I'll go to, uh, this here. Let's see, let's hope this opens up. Okay. And, um, Mr. Billadu, I, I, when I was creating this, I thought of you because I watch a lot of these hearings and I know the kind of feedback, uh, that you give, and I thought this would be helpful. It's a good thing. I, I, so our, our two buildings are corrugated metal. And this is a fly-through of the campus. You can see Swan Street and Sale Street here. This is the eleven thousand square foot building. I am not an architect, uh, but it's just some ideas that I want to throw down. Uh, it does show the parking allotment. Uh, it shows the interior. If I would go to the interior here. Troyon was very helpful in explaining that we'd want to see where the air conditioners would be if there was a mezzanine office space. So I created a mezzanine area. That's what, two hundred Swan. Uh, if I cross the street, this is the other building here, one ninety-nine, which is fifty-five hundred square feet. One eighty-nine, now this is existing, but it would have the parking designations uh, as well as the transformer. Troyon suggested that I show that. And the dumpsters. So if I move over, switch around, here's the dumpsters, recycled, uh, one ninety. I wanted some consistency in the campus. So even though this is corrugated metal, having some overhang that was maybe consistent with all of the buildings of the campus. Transformers here and the dumpsters, if I move you around, let's see. So the dumpsters are here on this side. This is a loading dock that currently exists. If I take you to the entrance of the business park. This is Divine Street. That's here. Uh, this is the house. It's two oh nine Swan. It doesn't fit. This rendering is, um, relatively close to scale, uh, but that is the entrance to the, the, the business park. And I was hoping that we would have a different entrance to the business park. View from Route ninety-five, if we spin around. And the, uh, tree canopy plan, I'll mention that next, is pretty accurate to this three D rendering that's here. Uh, proposed heights, material, uh, the uses. So Crossbones Dog Academy is listed under animal care, although it is animal training. U S Ecology, which is in this building here, they are listed under office slash industrial life. The compost plant is listed under office and parking structure. They're on this portion of the building. Let me zoom back to the campus here. The area of disturbance, uh, resulting from construction. We, uh, let's see, I can go to, let me hide this. Get out of here. Uh, let's go to my PDF. So I'm gonna go to the tree canopy and go to this key. No, there it is. Okay, so if I zoom into the key, a total lot size, including the streets, ninety-one, two fifty-two, our required canopy, thirteen and change. Uh, this has been approved by Doug Still. He, uh, recently penned this letter saying, yes, the canopy is approved. Now, for the preliminary, we will specify the species. We haven't gotten there yet, but I wanted to be sure that we satisfied the canopy. So you can see our canopy exceeds the fifteen percent. And he was very happy to see, we zoom out, that it's not just the new areas that we're developing here. This area or this area, we're covering the entire campus. So trees here, 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 that face ninety-five, again, that three D rendering showed that very well. Uh, we exceed the canopy coverage. And I think that is it on my list.
So let me, if I can address, and particularly for newer members, so this is a land development project. So you're gonna see this typically, a land development project twice. The first one is a master plan, which is more or less conceptual. And the second one is prelim, well, there's three phases. The second one is preliminary, and third one is final, which is usually delegated to your staff. So essentially, this is the master plan. And, and what we're asking you to do here is to approve the master plan. Uh, the concept, if you will, and it's gonna come back before you for preliminary, for more finite engineering. I mean, frankly, this is pretty close to being complete. But you will see it again with respect to more, um, design elements, more engineering elements, um, for preliminary. So at this point, you're granting master plan approval if you should choose to do it. And we're also asking for an adjustment, as AJ mentioned, with respect to parking. The, the, um, dog care facility is classified into the zoning ordinance as an animal care facility, as AJ said, it's not, doesn't exactly fit, but that's what it's classified under the zoning ordinance and they require one parking space per five hundred square feet of floor area. You know, uh, it, it does not require that many parking spaces. Seventeen spaces are required, but you know, really, there's, there's very little people there and maybe the pickup and and drop off is the busy time for, for dog, uh, daycare facilities, so to speak, or training facilities. So we're asking as, as allowed under the zoning ordinance for an adjustment of that number to, to allow for the nine parking spaces, which is provided. So, so, uh, there's, I think there's two motions before you, if, if you will, one is the approval of master plan and one is for the adjustment of the parking spaces for the animal care facility. Having, having answered any questions.
Thank you very much for that comprehensive presentation, I have to, uh, commend your sketchup skills, that was, uh, that was pretty, pretty impressive, yeah, much better than I could do. Uh, commissioners, uh, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I have, uh, I have a, a couple of questions, and maybe these are directed both to the applicant, but maybe I'll get some help. Um, I, I guess I, when looking at, at a plan like this, which is, uh, it's stipulating a campus essentially. Uh, I know, and I was trying to look it up quickly, there, there is some guidance regarding cohesiveness, which I think is addressed, but also, uh, orientation. And, and I guess I am curious in the, in the review of this, uh, whether that's something that, that was addressed. And if you can walk us through understanding what might be required, uh, in terms of which way it's supposed to face, what, what, what are we supposed to be looking at here?
Yeah, that's a
Good question, um, so, uh, this is the MMU district, it's, it's relatively lax in terms of, of regulation, uh, there aren't really setback regulations, the height is pretty generous, you're, you're pretty flexible in how you can orient your buildings on, on the lot. There are some guidelines here, the MMU district design standards. There's, uh, there's, it speaks mainly to multi-tenant retail centers, uh, but then there are a couple of of, uh, standards that, that pertain to site layout. So there's, there's, uh, discussion of office or guest facilities, uh, entries having direct access from street frontages and parking areas. Manufacturing and warehouse structure should be set back towards the center of the site to minimize impact on adjacent parcels, that's a should. Then there's this campus development, uh, uh, this is probably uh, most akin to, to, uh, a campus development because you have four buildings, they're internal to a site, this is now, you have a, you have a street, it's not a street anymore, it's kind of a, like a private driveway, the only real frontage, uh, that they have on a public street is the, the, the width of, of Swan Street where it dead ends at now the entrance to their lot, so it's a, it's kind of a, you know, I guess a campus is probably a, a good way to think about this, uh, so it does say.
Necessarily, I guess that was one of my questions, I guess there's no longer a street there, so the orientation to the street is, is maybe irrelevant.
I think it's kind of irrelevant in that sense, um, you know, I do, I do think that, that you know, this is, this is a, you know, commercial slash industrial site in the MMU district, I think what you're going to expect is, is buildings, building placement and parking placement to be, you know, sort of, the, the, in, in many ways, the site is going to kind of, kind of define how that, how that's going to work out. And that's sort of the way we look at this, you know, and, and, you know, I, I commend, uh, AJ for, for, you know, thinking about sort of cohesion and, and signage and entries and so forth. I think the fact is that, that this is so far off of, of Eddie Street and it's really not going to be all that visible and, you know, you'll see, you'll see glimpses of it from the highway, you'll see glimpses of it from Eddie Street, but for the most part, this is kind of, you know, its own sort of, uh, interior development.
Uh, thank you, that's helpful, uh, the only follow up, uh, is, and, and I agree, thank you for the presentation, uh, very cohesive and and, uh, thoughtful and thorough. Uh, the, the one thing, uh, I was curious about, uh, was the, and, and again, this is something to, to kind of figure out, it, it seems like you have the possibility of a lot of different types of traffic and, uh, just ensuring, uh, safety and distinction between them, so somebody who's just dropping off a dog is really different than the compost and it's really different than, than what you're showing in the bottom left-hand corner, uh, which is fairly big and, and moving that in and around the site, I, I'm sure should be one of the important considerations, uh, in all of this, right, like, how are you, if you are backing up an, an eighteen wheeler or whatever you're showing there, uh, making sure that you have the, the space and that it doesn't impact the rest of the operations, but surely you are working with your team to keep that in mind.
Absolutely, um, oh, thank you, for getting the microphone, thanks, John. The, the purchase of Sailed Street allowed us to create this footprint, there would, it wouldn't be possible to have this loading dock here and Brad can speak to this, Brad from Waterman Engineering can speak that he did do, uh, a turning radius and he said, yes, uh, they indeed can come right in, the, um, our proposed tenant, U S Ecology, who is in this building, is looking to lease this. Their vehicles can indeed come in here, turn, make an S turn and then pull up, uh, Sailed Street and then be able to back in. And what's nice about it is once they get past this building here, uh, they're then within this area uh, and all of their turning is basically in this kind of private area, uh, that is shared by uh, what we hope would be the compost plant and they're sharing this building at the moment, so, uh, it really is separated, north of Swan is a, is a certain style of tenant or services and south of Swan is, is maybe a little more industrial. But because of, uh, the purchase of Sailed Street, we now are allowed to do that without it, this, this, uh, design, this concept would just not fit. We wouldn't be able to get these in here and, um, did we want Brad, uh, from Waterman to speak to that at all regarding the traffic pattern, would that be helpful?
I, I'm satisfied with your answer, thank you. I'm satisfied with your answer, thank you.
Okay, great.
Yeah, but both Swan and Sales, we, we, we have recommended the abandonment of, you know, last year. So now, I, I know Harry always likes to hear this, they are not public streets any longer and they are back on the tax roll. Uh, so it's internal site circulation and the only entrance that I can gather is, is from Swan Street off of Eddie Street. So that's the, uh, the main, the main entrance there, I don't know, I guess, do you use Divine Street as part of Sales because that's?
Well, uh, very good question, the turning radius is, is tight here. So to come in off of Divine into Sales, uh, Brad was able to validate that, uh, vehicle this size wouldn't be able to do it now. Smaller vehicles, maybe a small cargo van could sneak in, but the tractor trailers, no, a, a box truck, he feels could and but the tractor trailers will need to take this.
You only purchased half of Sales Street.
Right, our twenty feet, the one that abuts our side of it, that's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
So there's an easement on Sales Street, is that correct for the city?
Right, let me go to that, there is an easement, um, there are no utilities there, uh, it's basically an overgrown street, so our name, go ahead, John.
If I can address, the easement relates to the, to the billboards essentially, which are billboards, uh, privately owned, uh, which, which are on ninety five, so the easement is to allow access to the billboard so that they can be changed from back to back.
And that's a paved street, the, the abandoned part of Sales Street is paved.
It is not.
No, it's all around, when, when the, when the Lamar company has to come to change the billboard, they actually, because this is overgrown, in the summertime, you can't even walk through this. Uh, they would come down here, they would go down Swan Street and both owners of the billboards here uh, have that easement, they were given that easement as well, uh, so they can get in here and James Adushin, who owns the billboard here, Lamar has access, you can see this easement that has been granted uh, is, is going to continue, so they can pull right, this is paved here, uh, under the billboard, no, and this terrain slopes down, sloping down to ninety five.
Is there not an easement on the south as well?
Oh, sorry, uh, let me get back. And there's, there's an easement here, this is easement, right, so if we can make this passable, uh, then the Lamar folks, they have smaller pickups, they can then drive through here and get to the billboard, now, they have two means of getting into the billboard, from Sailed Street and from Swan Street, where before it was just Swan. So they were really happy about that.
Is, because you had included the Sales Street piece and the turning radius of the trucks.
Yes, 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 correct, right, but it's this side, this is, this is the twenty feet that's here. So in, in most cases, they won't even have to go this far in, they can just do the turn and stop right about here. You can see this is, this width is, uh, I think two hundred and ninety feet. So there's plenty of space, uh, for them to make that S turn. I, and this isn't passable at the moment, I've seen them drive in like this, right up to the loading dock and back in to this area, which is vacant at the moment. If this would help, let me see. Uh, if I zoom in, if this is helpful. Please let me know, okay, so this is the corrugated metal, this is from three years ago, uh, that is Crossbones Dog Academy, this is the compost plant at U S Ecology. Uh, I, I can't zoom into here, but this is our lot, which is no longer overgrown. Uh, we purchased these two lots and this was cleared and remediated. Um, there was some soil issues, we cleared that and this retaining wall now stretches across, uh, giving us the campus area and then again, uh, if I go up, there's two oh nine Swan. Uh, this was the problem, you can see these vehicles were left here with the orange tags. Unregistered, stolen. And, uh, see a lot of this. But yeah.
More cleared and clean at the moment.
Yeah.
The property, so.
I can't hear. Oh, was that John?
Yeah, use the mic if you're. It's, it's, sorry about that, it's, it's much more cleared and cleaned right now than it was in the picture shown three years ago.
Correct.
Thank you.
And, and I don't think this is our, uh, concern, but the compost plant and their quality, is that? And has it expanded to the building? Sure.
When they pick up food waste, uh, forgetting that, thank you, John, when they pick, pick up food waste, it never is stored at Swan Street. They pick up the food waste and they bring it to the compost facility. Then when they come.
So they're not doing any processing at this facility?
There is never food waste.
Vehicles, vehicles, things like that.
That's right, that's right.
Okay. That explains, I didn't know.
Sure.
I, I do want the record to show that we have no jurisdiction regarding the disposition of that house that you're talking about. I'm just on, on, on Swan Street.
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Any other commissioners, uh, for this applicant? Questions before we hear the staff report and open it up to public comment?
I mean, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I just, uh, for the record, uh, this is a public information meeting and the notices in the, both the newspaper and the butters were, were provided by Mr. Coletta and an affidavit to that effect was provided to the staff.
No, it's in the files.
I have to say, Mr. Coletta, you're a very prepared applicant. You've done all of your research.
Thank you.
All right, I guess if the commissioners have no more uh, questions for the applicant, let's, uh, let's hear the staff report and then open it up to public comment.
Sure, and commissioners, as we've seen in the foregoing presentation, the applicant has shown that the use of the property conforms to what's allowed on site in the MMU seventy five zone. The dimensions and site design as discussed conform to the ordinance. The landscaping will meet the ordinance, we're only waiting on the specification of the tree species that we will see at the preliminary plan. The applicant did include an erosion control plan, but we don't foresee any negative environmental impacts. As far as parking goes, the applicant will meet the parking requirement based on the number of employees within the buildings. And as far as the dimensional adjustment goes, we would recommend that you approve that adjustment. Finding that it is required based on the type of use and size as well as the, the size type and use of the facility and that would be for the dog training facility. So based on that, we would, we find that the plan is in conformant, the project is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. This area is intended for business mixed-use development and the type of development that will occur on site conforms to that land use designation. Based on, as we talked about the zoning ordinance, the applicant could form to the use dimension landscaping as well as parking requirements subject to, subject to you granting the dimensional adjustment. As far as lighting goes, if the applicant intends to provide onsite lighting, they will need to provide a lighting plan at the preliminary plant stage. We don't foresee a negative environmental impact, no physical constraints that impact development of the property. And adequate vehicular and pedestrian access will be provided from the active portion of Swan Street. So based on that, we recommend that you first grant the dimensional adjustment for parking and then that you approve the master plan, finding it to be in conformance with the zoning ordinance and comp plan.
Thank you, Troyon. Uh, with that, we will open it up to public comment. We will welcome anyone here in the building to, uh, address us at this time. And if you're joining us virtually, please raise your virtual hand by hitting the raise hand button at the bottom portion of your screen or press star nine if you are calling in. Please, please come up and, uh, and state your name, please.
Yeah, Maritza Gomez. Just had a question, I'm sorry, what is it? Maritza Gomez. Okay, regarding the two oh nine Swan point, what happens at the point you're trying to purchase them? What happens is if you can't, is that still going to be a?
Right now, that, that's not a part of the, uh, the application.
Oh, okay, I was just curious as he was.
That's why I tried to clarify that we have no jurisdiction over that right now, his application is only on the parcels that he controls, uh, but he included that as a representative of, of the area that he's trying to. Anyone else on the virtual?
Oh.
Okay, and with that, we will close the public portion of the application. And we will commence deliberation. Uh, to start off, I mean, I, I think this is, as, as, uh, Attorney Gary, he said, this is, this is not the newest and hottest thing that everyone is looking forward to, but I think it's an appropriate use of this area and, uh, it's zoned for MMU seventy five. And, and I think it's, it's an appropriate use, the, the parking reduction, I also agree with, it's, it, it seems like an over some, over burdensome classification to have seventeen parking spaces for, for that facility. What are the other commissioners' thoughts on this?
Well, I agree with the chair, I think we should, uh, grant the dimensional adjustment for parking, so I think we should start with that. That's a motion.
We have, we have. We have a motion on the table, we'll table that for some more deliberation.
So is the parking variance requested based on the current use of the facility as a dog training?
It's, it's based on the parking calculations for the proposed uses of all the facilities.
In the future.
I'm sorry, what was that answer, is based on that?
The parking calculations for the proposed uses of these facilities. The parking calculations for the proposed uses of these facilities is, is what I'm.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it's based on the, the dog training facility building. So that that requires one per five hundred, so.
But you also have proposed uses for the other buildings that you're proposing, and they all meet or exceed.
They would, they would meet or exceed it, but they do not with respect to this particular use.
Does that answer your question, or?
So, so it's not based on the use of the building as a, as a dog care facility? I, I think my question is, what happens if they're not there anymore? And another kind of use is, is comes.
I'll let Mr. Azar take that one.
So, so my understanding actually is that there's just enough parking to meet the zoning requirements for the other, for the other uses. You know, in theory, this being a campus, you could allocate some parking spaces on a different part of the campus for the dog facility. But it, but it seems to me that in this case, the, the, the only shortfall that you have is for the, the dog facility. So two things about this, number one is, you know, we're always trying to evaluate our ordinance to, to see if it, if the regulations make sense. We acknowledge that the parking requirement for this kind of facility is probably overly burdensome, and we never want to have a regulation that requires more parking than is necessary for, for, you know, the particular use. But to your point, this dimensional adjustment is for the continued use of this building as a, as a animal care facility. If the use does change, if the tenant changes and the parking requirement is different, then they would have to go through a different, another process to, 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 to make sure that that parking complies, whether it's, whether there's enough of it or not. And, and in this case, just to be clear, this is not a, a variance. We have lots of different processes. A variance is one where you have to demonstrate a hardship and there's specific criteria in the law. With the land development project process, we're allowed to have what are called dimensional adjustments that are, that are, they're not exactly variances, you don't have to have the same sort of burden of proof. In this case, just the fact that, you know, they have this use, they have this building. It's a, it's, it's sort of the.
Self-contained.
Yeah, it's a self-contained sort of campus, you know, based on the use and the building and the demand, you are allowed to grant that adjustment.
That's a good question, thank you. Any other questions on the dimensional adjustment requested? We have a motion, we need a second to continue it. Second, all right, we have a motion on the table, we'll go around and, in order, Chris. Noel.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Manuel.
Hi.
And I vote aye, so we will grant the dimensional adjustment. Now, for this one, we would, if we were to make a motion on the master plan, we'd want to include the staff recommendations listed. Which, which is just that.
Like to make a motion subject to the recommendations and the staff report.
All right, we have a motion. Manuel, we have a second. We'll go around in order, Chris.
Hi.
Noel.
Hi.
Harry.
Hi.
Manuel.
Hi.
And I vote aye. Congratulations, you have a master plan approval. Good luck, we look forward to seeing you back at preliminary. And now we move on to agenda item number four. Major land development project, case number twenty-two zero one five MI eight seventy Westminster Street. This, this case will look familiar to a few of you. We've never had a, a development plan review from, from this, from this address. Well, just, let's, let's start off by first saying that Noel is going to recuse himself from, from this. And since it's the last agenda item.
I can leave.
You would do.
All right, thank you very much.
And with that. Troyon, you can go ahead and read this.
Sure, thanks, Commissioner. And a quick introduction, this is a site that some of you may be familiar with. It is a former bank building as well as the former annex that the applicant has converted part of it to mixed use and part of it to residential. So this, this project mainly involves the annex building, where the applicant will be adding one story resulting in eleven dwelling units and creation of approximately eight thousand three hundred square feet of new gross floor area. And this will be in addition to what they classify as infill development that will be taking place inside the bank building. And that's about eight eighty-eight hundred square feet. So together, taking that square footage as well as the number of dwelling units, this is a minor land development, that project that is before you. So I guess the applicant is here and they can tell us more about the specifications of the project in terms of the design materials used and other criteria that we review at this stage.
Gentlemen, please introduce yourself.
Bill DiStefano, President of the Omni Group.
Mick Hogan, Vice President of the Omni Group. Want to discuss this a little bit? Yeah, Troyon, you summed it up pretty well. Yeah, this project has, I should say, this property in particular has been seen before you. It was, really, the purpose was the design waiver that we were seeking for some ground floor units at the bank. The bank portion, we refer to it as the bank portion and the annex portion. And this, you know, the, the, the main meat of this application is in regards to the annex, where, as Troyon said, we're looking to add a third story addition to the building to create eleven more apartment units on top of the twenty-two that we already have proposed there. Just in terms of the design, this is predominantly all existing construction, you know, where you do see that additional floor, we do have some, you know, cement fiber siding. I do think that somebody maybe put in here that it was going to be black, but I think the idea is to make that, do you want to touch on that?
It's more charcoal, it's to kind of tie together a little with the new buildings that we are building down the street or on the same street that you can see in the distance. So they will be the same. And I'll add that this kind of came about because the roof was not in the condition we thought it was, and it needs to be torn off. Since we're doing it, light bulb went off, we could use additional units, so why not? Yeah, why not? Yeah, the engineers verified that it's, it's just built to be able to handle another floor without, so we just raise another level with the stairs, elevator, and that's it.
And the, the height of this proposed building is thirty-nine six? That's right, yep, it's right there, yeah, okay, and we're in a so we're allowed fifty feet.
You're allowed to be, yeah, four stories, fifty feet, so these three stories.
Three stories.
Just shy of forty feet.
Yeah, thirty-nine feet. Okay, commissioners, do you have questions for the applicant?
I, I'm curious, as you're showing the, the new portion, and it's predominantly or maybe exclusively one bedrooms, what is the mix in the building as a whole of, of types of units?
Mostly one bedrooms.
Yeah.
Which is where the demand is.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, yeah. I, I get off, I get my soapbox enough on this and, or on other things, so I'm not going to go after this, but.
But you're welcome.
It's where, it's where the profit is in development. It's not necessarily where the need is, because we know that we have a dire need for family housing and multifamily housing and, and that in particular our lower income communities require facilities that can accommodate multiple families and multiple units. So again, I, I, I'm not here to, yeah, I'm not here to compel you to, to do one thing or the other, I just. Thank you.
Harry?
No, I think it's, I think it's just a natural development. I think actually it's visually kind of an improvement on the two, the two stories is just too small for the really wonderful magnificence of the bank entrance way. So I, I'm in favor of it and the market is the market, so I, 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 I'm not going to get on my soapbox either, so.
And this is, this is just for development plan review, we've already issued, we've already issued some dimensional adjustments as indicated by the applicant. Really, this is, this is, this is just development plan review, we're not looking at, at any other relief or anything.
It's actually, so, yeah, so, so you're right that, that that you've actually seen two separate development plan review applications for this lot. Both of them have been the design waivers. One was just for the annex and the second one was for the, the bank building proper. That one was, that one came to you most recently, and you'll recall, they, they have three thousand square feet of commercial proposed on that ground floor, but sort of towards the rear, there was going to be some ground floor residential. At the time, when they came in with the, with the bank building, there was also some infill development, some infill floor area that they were proposing, but it didn't hit that trigger of ten thousand square feet or ten units. When you take that square footage and you combine it, the new square footage on this floor, this annex, that, that kicks you over the ten thousand square feet of new development. So this actually now is a minor land development project. They, they do have those design waivers in place, previously granted through that other process. We suggest that, that should you approve this, that you reference and incorporate those previous approvals. So, so it's all sort of combined into one approval.
So to be clear about the, the previous waivers were for the annex and not for that other prop, the other building?
The, the, so we, so the, the three, you can see in the distance, this lower, this lower picture. That's those, that's those three apart, brand new apartment buildings, that's not part of this application. They, they did get the design waiver on those as well, but that's outside, that's on a separate lot, and that's not part of this particular application. This application is, is for the new floor area within the bank building and the new floor area on this third floor that we've just been talking about.
Any other commissioners have any questions of the applicant before we hear the staff report? We can open it up to a public comment. And we'll get a chance to deliberate after that. All right, Troyon, take it away.
Commissioners, based on the applicant's presentation, we can that the use, the proposed use of multifamily conforms to the, is permitted by right in the C two zone. And as far as dimensions and site design goes, the materials used as well as the height of the building all conform to the, conform to the requirements, the design requirements of the zone. The applicant will meet the parking requirement, parking will be provided in the care of the lot. And this, and also they have included a conceptual landscaping plan, which shows that they will be providing landscaping within the parking area. So based on that, we find that the plan is in conformance with, with the comprehensive plan, particularly the future land use map, which shows that this area is intended for neighborhood commercial mixed-use development and where multifamily development is encouraged and provision of housing would conform to objective H two of the plan. So as far as the use goes, this, the annex addition, which will provide multifamily development is in conformance with the zoning ordinance permitted by right in the C two zone, as well as the dimension and design as previously discussed. The applicant will meet the parking requirement, we don't foresee a negative environmental impact. There are no physical constraints that impact development of the property, and adequate vehicular and pedestrian access will be provided from Westminster and Cranston Streets.
Excuse me, excuse me, Grant, you can't, you can't be interacting with the, the commissioners. You can.
Go back to division slide.
When the time, when the time comes, we can.
We'll be doing that after the presentation. So yeah, adequate vehicular and pedestrian access will be provided from Westminster and Cranston Streets. So based on that, we would recommend that you approve the preliminary plan subject to these conditions, that the final landscaping plan be subject to the approval of the city forester, that when you vote on this item, you incorporate the findings and previous approvals for waivers granted for the bank and annex pursuant to twenty nineteen dash eighteen DPR and twenty twenty-one dash eleven DPR. And those waivers were granted to find that provision of additional commercial space is non-necessary. The validity of the preliminary plan should be extended to one year from the date of recording of the approval letter. And finally, final plan approval should be delegated to a DPD staff.
Hey, thank you, Troyon. Now with that, we will open it up to public comment.
May I just ask one question, Troyon? In your third recommendation, can you just expand on that? So the validity of the preliminary plan is extended to one year, what is it currently?
So for minor subdivisions and land development projects, it's three months. So we extend the validity to three years, because, you know.
That's right.
Yeah, so people have that time.
To one year, yeah. That's great, sorry, that's.
I'm sorry, one year, one.
I said that they hadn't been in front of us for DPR, and they hadn't been in front of us for a land development project, so I did the same thing earlier. All right, with that, we will open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience or anyone in the virtual audience that would like to comment on this application? Please raise your virtual hand, press star nine if you're calling in. We have. We have Rachel Robinson online here, I can allow her to promote panelists. All right, Rachel, you can unmute yourself, turn on your camera if you like, and you are in the meeting.
Great, hello, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have much of a voice this week. Rachel Robinson, the Providence Preservation Society. I just wanted to comment briefly that we are grateful that the developer is retaining both the original bank building and this mid-century annex. And I certainly can't speak as an engineer, but I think stylistically, the annex can handle a third story addition. Would, I realize too that this is not a design review body, but would urge the developer to, you know, pay attention to the details and materials so that they complement the existing annex. And I was just hoping too that the iron fence that surrounds most of the buildings here will be maintained, retained and maintained, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rachel. Anyone else?
Can I respond to that?
For, we'll, we'll, we'll get to that at the end, yes, thank you. All right, well, it looks like we have someone else who, no?
No.
They dropped off?
Nobody else asking to.
Any, anyone in the actual audience? State your name for the record, please. State your name for the record, please.
Quentin Gary. I want to voice support for three stories. You see forty five feet, that's how I was only one should say, that's why I was only one said it's decades until we changed it this past decade. Not fair to change, but you guys are the stories for me to, so that's. I want to echo the comment of the commissioner that mentioned already, and they're pretty, they're pretty, they're kind of a snug, and then when you say, well, it's only because there's only one bedroom apartment, well, that explains that. And um, I welcome, so I brought the speaker in the house room. We have five rooms, there's two bedrooms, kitchen, dining room, tower. And the annotation for this is called. House, five rooms, four of this, one of that. And so, um, I'm concerned in one bedroom really doesn't buy the, the small family to survive here. And uh, what I hear, um, for the second floor, there's also going to be designed for one bedroom units, because it's going to be eleven, eleven, eleven. So my question is, the three, the three houses you're building further, uh, so the three houses you're building along.
Yes.
Town or the parking lot. How many units?
They do have two bedroom units.
Oh, that's a very much, three, uh.
Yes. Oh, I don't know offhand the, the square footage, but there are two, uh, two bedroom units in each building.
Six. Two to each building.
Yes.
Where, the three floors.
Three floors.
Great. So, so we're, 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 we're talking about the, the application in front of us, and again.
Talking about something far, far away.
Mr. Doug Gary, you, you need to uh, pose your questions to the, to the board and then we will, we will direct them to them after public comment has ended. That's.
They're right here. I gotta talk to you, you talk to them?
That is the process. You've, you've been here many times before and you, you know that that's, that's the process. And again, we're, we're, we're talking about eight seventy Westminster Street. We're not talking about the townhouses down the street. That's not before us today.
I understand that. I'm, I'm supporting the idea of a assortment of housing opportunities. And so I want to get an understanding of what they're proposing build. So, you know. So, but, once I ask the question, then you ask the question, and they answer it.
Then we will close the public comment and then.
Well, that's my point. Do I get a chance to respond to that?
No. You, you're welcome to talk to them outside of this meeting, uh, but this is a public meeting and it has, it has rules and.
Perfectly comfortable doing this in public as opposed to in private.
And, and if you want to do it in the public meeting, you have to follow the rules of the public meeting.
Fine, can you then not close the public comment, ask the question, let them answer the question, and then I can respond if I have a response. Yeah.
So again, the, the, the application in front of us is eight seventy Westminster Street. If you have anything further to discuss or, or any other questions that you'd like to ask the board, we're happy to ask, answer them, or we can pass along your questions to the applicant. The public comment is not a back and forth between the applicant and the public. But that's, that's, but it's it's, it's simple today, but again, that is, the, the rules of the meeting are the rules of the meeting.
Well, the rules of the meeting allow you to not close the public contract.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Doug Gary, and there are forty eight units in three buildings. They've testified that six of those are two bedrooms.
Okay, that will not, thank you for that information. So that means.
But however, Mr. Doug Gary, you're being argumentative. You're trying to talk to us about what our process should be. You're here to comment about a land development project that's before you.
Number one, I disagree with your contention that I'm being argumentative. Number two, given the context, that's possible. And what that means is that there are sixteen units in each of the three buildings, and two of the sixteen are two bedrooms. Fourteen out of the sixteen are one bed. Assuming that. Now, exactly. Unless there's some treatment. You sold it on. And um, so uh, I guess I would echo concern of the commissioner that uh, I mean, it makes sense. I like continuity, consistency, um, but it would make sense to have a little more balance in one or two. And um, so, so, you know. It's true that there's no way you can do two bedrooms in any of the three units. Block, just up to half a block. And perhaps, uh, consideration should be given to building two bedrooms in the third floor, you know, just a little more balance in overall development of this humongous parcel and wonderful opportunity. So. It was a building of the, of the walking road and uh, answered by two of us. Wish you well.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Okay, uh, anyone else from the public in the virtual meeting or there's no one else in person? So I guess we can confirm that and we see no other hands. So with that, we will close the public comment portion of this application. And since Mr. Doug Gary is here, uh, do you have any comments on the, on the unit mix? Uh, I know Manuel discussed it earlier. Anything you'd like to say about that in response to the public comment?
Um, no, not, nothing further.
Okay.
And then I would like to address, um, was it Rachel from?
Yes, the, the second one was the.
That we will be keeping all, all of the Rhode Island fencing.
Okay, that's great. And you'll maintain it and make sure it's in working order. Great.
Absolutely.
Wonderful. All right, um, I guess with that, we can move on to deliberations. Um, we heard the staff report. I uh, I, I do agree with you, Manuel. There are a couple of schools of thought as far as the housing needs. I know we are in a housing crisis, so all units uh, contribute to the pressures that are on other housing units. So I, I do commend the additional units being built. Uh, I would like to see this area be a little bit more family oriented, but uh, that's not my choice. I'm not the developer here. Um, and anyone else? Yes?
I, I will note, and Mick does all the leasing, so he could speak more to it, but we have, um, we just finished forty nine units in Federal Hill. The demand for the one bedrooms for the people, younger people that are coming in and getting jobs here that are not from Rhode Island. Uh, it's, it's great.
That's very true.
It's an amazing demand um, for real good jobs. We have doctors and nurses. And they rented before we finished building. So there is a demand. I, I totally understand, yeah, the other side to it. But we also have to make it feasible.
Right. And all new housing is, is good housing.
You know, abstractly, balance is, is fine, you know, if we're studying Greek history or something. But the fact is, this is the market, this is business. And you know, if suddenly people started lining up saying, we need two bedroom apartments, it, you don't have to be a genius to figure out how to create two bedroom apartments here and have a studio.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you'll adjust, right? We all do.
Absolutely.
That's what we do.
Uh, Manuel?
I will, however, add, and, and I think it's my responsibility as a, as a commission member to say that the, the city of Providence and uh, certainly through its agencies and disposed as it is, not just with the statutory and regulatory responsibility, but also with multiple ways of funding and compelling uh, developers to act in certain ways, uh, has the ability to, to compel the market to act in certain ways. And not to say that that's something for us to consider here and decide at this moment, but something to consider as we proceed in this work that we're trying to do, to try identify ways in which we can compel the market to act in ways that respond to the needs that we see in our community and in particular, the needs of our frontline communities, which are disproportionately impacted by the housing crisis and other uh, factors like uh, that are not unrelated, uh, like climate change, like uh, health outcomes that I mentioned now because they are also related to the very simple and basic act of having a home.
Well, well said, Manuel.
But, but all that said, I'm in support of this project and uh, find no issue with it.
This is somewhat unrelated, but it's, it's on my mind because of, you know, reading it, say, in the news with the Superman building and all of that money that the state and, and the city want to give developers. That's the building that should be afforded. They're going to get all that money to do that. That should be affordable.
Okay, that's not under our jurisdiction.
And as, as long as, as long as we're, as long as we're all unburdening ourselves. I would love to see. I would love to, I would love to see, I would love to see uh, uh, efforts to strengthen families and to um, you know, put perhaps more emphasis on marriage and uh, so forth and so on and.
We're, we're going down.
Yeah, no, I'm all done, but I just said if you want to go down the road, I'll run with you.
I, I do, I do want to uh, to commend the developer. I'll echo Rachel Robinson's uh, comment. This is not in a protected historic district. Um, and the developer is retaining the historic facade and the mid-century annex. So I, I, I do commend you for doing that and appreciate all of, all of the work you're doing. Uh, it's not an easy task and many others have looked at it previously and not been up to it. So, um, Chris, did, did you have anything you wanted?
Um, yeah, I just, I have one question, um, and then I'll, I'll, I'll comment. Um, when does adding space and units kick in, change, I mean, make it a new plan? Like what, at what point? What's the threshold for that?
Well, uh, well, a new plan, so, so um, I think the, what we're talking about is the, the type of, the, the type of development uh, will trigger a certain type of project and um, land development project, which is what we're talking about here, gets triggered whenever there's new floor area of ten thousand square feet or more, or, and or ten or more uh, that new floor area that, that accounts for ten or more dwelling units. So it's the, it's the new construction um, that, that triggers the land development project review. And so uh, this, the, the combination of what they were doing in the bank plus the annex didn't rise to the level of land development project until they decided they wanted to put this third story on. That floor area, number of units, plus the floor area, the new floor area, number of units that they're, they're infilling within the, the bank building, that put it over the top. Is that what your, is that what your question?
Yeah, so my, but my question really is like, um, we granted uh, um, uh, the dimensional, um, what's the word again? The, the, the.
For the waivers?
We, we, we granted the waivers based on um, um, the other development project, right? The other type of development project?
Yes, you grant, well, so, so uh, it wasn't a land development project. Um, ne- neither, neither uh, parts of this property were land development projects, but uh, they requested the waiver from that design regulation, which applies to certain streets in the, in the C two zone. And uh, that was through a process called development plan review.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, now, uh, so those are, those have been granted and those are in place and, and that was through that process.
Mm-hmm. But then now it's a minor land development. Shouldn't we be reviewing everything?
So what we say in our staff report is that, is that uh, oh, oh, okay, shouldn't, shouldn't you be reviewing everything? Um, meaning, meaning everything having to do with both.
Both, both buildings.
Both buildings. Um, I would argue, I would argue no, because, because what you are reviewing is the land development project itself is the, the new gross floor area. Um, yeah, it's a, it's a little bit of a new, it's a little bit of nuance here. Um, I'll, I'll draw a, a, a parallel to a, another project that you had reviewed on uh, Westfield and Warren Street. It's an existing building. Uh, it's an existing mill building. Uh, some know it as the Klitzner uh, complex. And the proposal there was to add a third story to that building and that third story was going to exceed the, the threshold to make it a, a minor land development project. What you were reviewing was not what they were doing with the entire complex, but you were reviewing the, the new construction. That's, that's the land development project. So likewise, in this case, it is the new construction uh, that you're reviewing. Uh, they have already gotten the waiver for uh, parts of the building that, that aren't included in this land development project. Uh, however, they're included in the. Our suggestion is to, our suggestion is to tie it together. I don't, I don't think that you technically need to, but uh, you know, we're, we're suggesting that, that you do that out of, out of an abundance of caution.
Well, the abundance of caution would be to review everything as one, right? I mean, I think here.
Well, uh, uh, the, the only thing that you would be, the only.
On the second floor, they're, they're connected. There's, you can walk from one building to the other. So we, we looked at these projects separately, right? So when they came and they said, well, we don't talk about that other project because it's a separate project. So we granted the reviews for everything separately. I mean, the, the waivers, everything except the other, the prop, property here in the parking lot, we re- we granted everything separate. And now they're going to add a third floor and we're going to look at that separately. So I, at what point does this become a single project?
So the other, the other parcel is.
The other buildings are further away.
Legally a separate.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can.
We looked at the bank building, the bank development.
I, I can, I can respond.
Granted a waiver specifically for that, right?
I understand, I understand the question and, and, and yeah, so, so um, first of all, the, the um, the three other new construction buildings are on separate lots. Those have been subdivided out. That, that was a, that was a land development project in its, in its own right.
Mm-hmm.
When uh, they came in with the uh, right around the same time, maybe even at the same meeting, they came in with the waiver request for, for the annex because that was the their proposal at the time was to convert the two-story annex into residential. Uh, and the waiver requested and granted was again, first story residential? That's right.
Yes.
That's right. Okay, so then uh, when they came in with the bank building, the, the historic bank building proper, um, the proposal was to add new, and, and remember, uh, for the annex, there was no addition of new floor area. So it wasn't even close to being a land development project. It wouldn't have triggered land development project under, under any circumstances.
Um, strictly a main street thing.
That's right. And then now, when they came in with the, with the bank building proper, uh, and the proposal was uh, again, to, to, to renovate. Um, they asked for, they had asked for the waiver as part of the renovation, but as part of the renovation of that. But as part of the renovation of that, they were adding floor area within these, these open areas. But that addition of floor area. Did also was not enough to trigger land development project. It was under ten units and it was under ten thousand square feet. So. That itself wouldn't have triggered land development project. And in conjunction with what they had previously proposed for the annex, it wouldn't have triggered land development project. It was only once they came in with the third story that. That I looked at this and concluded that the, when you look at this lot in its entirety. In in its entirety with the two masses of buildings. The the new floor area for the annex plus the new floor area for the. For the historic bank building, that then constitutes a land development project.
So in my, like, in my recollection of this, you know, we, the the annex came up first, like you said. And we thought, oh, it would hard, be hard to put residential on the, I mean, you know, commercial on the first floor anyways, right? Like, it's not really any way to gain to that building. Then separately, we look at the, the, the bank building, right? And we granted that, that first floor apartment in the back. Because.
That's right.
You know. They, they were like, hey, this would be a hard place to put commercial space. So we looked at that separately. And now we're coming back and we're looking at, hey, we're gonna add another. But, you know, would I have granted that waiver on the first floor if there were ten other units? I don't know. Like, I, I feel very uncomfortable right now. Just saying, hey, you know, like, I'm fine that we've granted these other waivers in sep- seemingly separate. Meetings, right, like completely separate presentations. Like, this is a, a completely, yes, the other project is on a different lot, but these are on. The the buildings are connected. So this, I don't see how this becomes a sing, this, this is not a single thing that we should look at in, 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 in whole, in totality. If you're saying that it isn't and we shouldn't look at it like that, I'm fine. But I'm, I personally, I'm uncomfortable with the. Including the language about the waivers. That were hap- happened previously, because I'm, I'm not comfortable that I would make the same decision. Knowing that there was a third floor added on. The other thing I would like to say about. The one-bedroom market is that. There, there is clear, clear evidence that there's a, a demand for multi-unit. Multi-bedroom units and you could find this information. At the, in the continuum of care, if you walk around the corner from this and you go to the two largest homeless shelters in, in the state. I'm sure they're, they're, they'll help you find numerous. I think there were, last time I checked, there were five hundred families or something like that, or five hundred of of people and families. That were, were currently homeless. So. In my time on the, on this, on this body, we've approved in Providence. Almost a thousand one-bedroom units. And so when we're talking about. The physical space and the physical area, the geographic area in the city of Providence. Every time you take up an acre and you fill it with one bedrooms. That's an acre that you can't fill it with additional larger units. So. I, you know, we all understand the scarcity of land in the city. So. I, I, I still would like for, to make the suggestion that in the new, the, the next comprehensive plan that we mentioned. Or build in some mechanism to count the number of units. The number of bedrooms that are being built and that come before this board, because. Simply just saying that there, there's a demand for it doesn't really mean that there's a need for it. That's my, my big issue with that.
I think, I think my only counter, not. Justifying the, this particular project is, this was commercially, this was originally commercial space. And then vacant for a long period of time. And then now it's going to be housing and and my hope is that, that any, excuse me, housing bill takes the pressure off other areas. But.
There's plenty, I can, I'll send you some papers, that trickle, trickle-down housing doesn't work.
Trickle-down housing, and, and, you know, just.
Well.
We're adding more housing stock to, to the, the city in one way or another. For this project that was never housing previously.
I, I'm married to a doctor and we lived around the corner from this property in a redeveloped mill. We had the biggest unit in the, in that project, I paid for the extra parking. So we are people of means and as soon as my wife got pregnant. We were no longer living in the West End and that's what I'd like to say. I, I, my father was born on Bridgen Street. I lived in West End. My grandmother was a state rep in the West End. Nobody in my family lives in West End anymore.
And I've, I've lived in the West End for. Fifteen years now and, and I have a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter as well and, you know. I have a nine-hundred-square-foot apartment, I have a three-family house that. I, I get it, I do, I understand.
But Chris makes a great point and that is that, keeping, keeping count. Of what exactly we're really talking about is just important, so, I mean.
I think it is.
We, we, we talk about, we talk about these things that we don't really know. And then we did have that presentation that was made a year or so ago and Chris pointed out that the numbers were. Worthy of considerable thought and questioning and doubt. And I, I think that, you know, I, I couldn't agree more. And I think most business people would actually value having accurate numbers. About what is, what is really needed, because. But again, that's not for here, but I. The comp plan.
We're revising. This is definitely goes into the conversations we're having about the revisions to the comprehensive plan. So I, I think it's, it's worthy discussion, if not for this project in general by this fort. Because we need to be considering all of those, those aspects when we think about the revisions that are coming down. And the things that we wanna do and like that last application about accessory dwelling units, I'm, I'm all for that. I, I think that's a, that's a great way to, to add unit stock to fairly low-impact unit stock. And and I hope the General Assembly does take action on that and she's able to do something with that without changing the zoning. But I've derailed this, I, I don't disagree with you, Chris, about the. And I think I, I think I mentioned this to Bob or I asked him about this prior to this meeting. Because we, we have seen this project in front of us twice and we sent, sort of seen it piecemeal and. And I, I asked him to. Explain that to us, because, you know, now we're looking at the whole project as a, as a, as a minor land development project. Because of the threshold that they've exceeded. And it would have been helpful to have more of a comprehensive presentation on everything with their planning on, on each portion of it. Even if we have granted dimensional adjustments previously or dimensional waivers. It would be helpful for us to see all of that together. I, I don't disagree at all.
Can I come on?
Yes, absolutely.
So just. As Bob mentioned, when we went before you for the new buildings. At the same time, we went before you for the waiver on the fir-, for the first floor and the annex. We knew that we wanted that annex to be apartments, we knew it'd be perfect for apartments, built, shaped, everything. Not for commercial, we wouldn't, I mean, I don't think anyone would want us to start cutting that building up. To put commercial storefronts in the way it is and it's been there since, I think, nineteen seventy. So that's what we knew at the time, we weren't sure what we were gonna do. We spent a lot of time planning and and looking at different. I think I've mentioned it here before, we've had numerous people that wanted to rent the building. And what it meant, that parking lot, be in a parking lot, the way it was now. And I don't think anyone would want that either, just, you know, just. Just looking at a black pavement. So then we made the decision on what we thought we would do with the bank, with the apartments. And have that commercial in the front, which is, you know, the front of that building. It's just, it's amazing and it, it makes the most sense. But it wouldn't make sense again to start cutting up especially the historic building. Not technically, but historic building and trying to put commercial retail into that building. Which is why then we went for the waiver for that section. So it was pieces, but it's the way it developed as we went. And we're not, you know, we're not big developers, so. We were Gilbane or somebody else, I'm sure, maybe this would have been a high-rise, I don't know, you know. But we do a very good job at the, you know, adaptive reuse. I've done schools and churches and now banks and a lot of mill buildings. And, you know, we try to do what's best and would look great in the neighborhood. This was a, you know, incredible area, that whole point was way back. My family's from Federal Hill originally and I, when it's done, I think everyone will love it and it will look great. I do understand and I, I, I get your point, there's housing, a lot of housing needed in every which way. But we also as developers have to slice it sometimes that we can make it work economically. That doesn't help everybody, I know, but, you know, we, we can't.
Yeah, I just wanna be clear that, like, I, I like the project, I, you know, I'm still trying to convince my wife that, you know. Maybe we should trade one of the boys in for. Unit three oh five, I think it passed the return period. But, and I trust Bob and Choyon. And I, and I know that the conversations that you guys have are more in-depth and, you know. We read these for a, a little bit and then we come in and we deliberate for a little bit. So I know that there's more work that, that goes on beyond this. I just would feel more comfortable with my vote if we were looking at it more and that's all I'm saying. Like, I'm not saying, I do occasionally use the opportunity to, you know. Ask me to vote last, please, so that if it's gonna pass, I will occasionally just vote against something, just to voice my displeasure. I noticed that my good friend Harry does that occasionally too, so I'm gonna ask to go last on this one. I like, I like the protest vote, so I'm ready to go.
So, so Bob, can you speak to both of those things and the, the votes that would need to pass?
Yeah.
As well? Because we're down to four commissioners.
Yeah.
On this. So, so, you know. I'll, yeah, first of all, with, with respect to that, you need four affirmative votes to, to approve a land development project. So, so it's a majority of the current membership, which is four out of seven, so keep that in mind. I, you know. The, the, I think the, the, the challenge that, that we have is that. Is that, you know, we do have to accommodate developers who are not always ready. To, to be looking globally at a, at a massive project. You know, we have to, we have to have an accommodation for. You know, a certain degree of, of piecemeal development. Of pivoting when conditions arise, you know. It, it wouldn't surprise me with any of the projects that we've approved if they came back and said, hey, you know. Supply chain issues, materials, market shifts, we need to do something else, you know, can you approve this? Do we have to go back to the board or is this something we can approve administratively? So we, we try to build some things in. When, when they first came to me and, and showed me this, this third-floor addition, they were looking at under ten units. That arguably wouldn't have triggered land development project, but I was the one that said, no. I, I know where you're going with this, I see the nuance, I see that there, there's a possible path there. But I felt that, given what had been already approved with the other bank building. That it's on the same lot, that the buildings are connected. They could have done it, they could have put a lot line through there, then we talked about those options. I urged them to apply. You know, even given the, the workload that, that you have. You know, trying to do my best to, to, you know, manage the, the workload. I knew it was gonna be more time for all of us, but I thought it was important to bring it back. With respect to the, to the, to the waivers, I get what you're saying. And I, and I, I fully acknowledge that, that, you know, maybe there's a possibility that you would have looked at this differently. Given the third floor. I would not look at it any differently, because I think the ground floor condition still is the same. They still have that wrought iron fence that you don't wanna, you don't wanna take apart, they have those windows, the existing fenestration. So, you know, I, I get where you're coming from. However, I, I, I think that under the circumstances. Our position and your vote on those waivers was sound then and I think it's, I think it would be sound today.
Yeah, I think, you know, Chris. I think the point is that. I don't think anybody was trying to deceive anybody and I'm not suggesting that you're saying that. But I'm just saying, things develop over time and, you know, I remember first thinking, wow. The, they're, they're gonna keep the bank building, I mean, that's pretty wonderful. I actually, it's funny that they mentioned Gilbane, I actually imagined someone like Gilbane or somebody coming in. Bulldozing a whole thing, putting up a big high-rise and, and, and. So it, it was, it, it's incrementalism is not always planned. I guess that's what I'm saying, things grow and this has really grown over time. And so. I agree, if, if you'd seen the whole thing. Perhaps we would have, or perhaps we would have decided differently. But I don't think, I, I'm almost tempted to say, without the incremental growth, we wouldn't be looking at anything. Was for fifty years and forty or whatever it was. So sometimes, I think it's in a way a tribute to Providence and everything. That it has developed this way. I mean, these guys could have built these three buildings and be out there, you know. Come on in, I'll give you three months free rent or blah, 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 but it, it's, it's worked. And so I, I'm just happy and I think incrementalism grows as well as. Can, it can be planned, it can be planned. But sometimes when you're investing this much money, this much time and this much risk. You just hope that when you get to the next ledge. It leads up the hill instead of over the cliff.
Especially with adaptive reuse, there are a lot of, there are a lot of unknowns. Existing conditions that you're unable to, I, I, I know from personal experience and, and my work. You know, you, you can't always anticipate everything and, and I do think, you know, to Bob's point. Two, two points that, that he brought up that, that I, I actually agree with and, and I'm glad he, he stated. Number one, we, we don't wanna be a city that is obstructionist in the way that we view things. We, we want that malleability to some degree and, and I do appreciate Bob bringing this back to us. When there could have been mechanisms that divided it up and carved it up and, and he urged them to come in front of us. And the second point that I, I would agree with is, you know, looking at this in, in its totality. I don't think I would have made another decision on, on the first floor residential on, on either one of these buildings, in the rear of the bank building. Or in the, in the proposed three-story building. So I think, you know, they're sound, they're good planning practice and I think that's all we're looking at to incorporate this recommendation. And is, is just good planning practice to make sure that it's, it's all tied together.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think you would agree that, that we wouldn't wanna cut that building up.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
On that first floor.
I've, I've, I've liked all the projects, I've liked, I've, I've liked them, I, I, I've been fine with them. My day job, I do data stuff. And so the one, the one-bedroom thing just keeps sticking, because that's, every time I come in here, I see it. And I'm like, somebody, I had a little notebook, but I, I lost it.
We, we had two beds in some of our other developments. And we started when we were doing the Atwell's project. And we started when we were doing the Atwell's project, Jones Street project, we had the two beds. We had a difficult time renting them. And cost is part of it. Absolutely. I mean, could you rent it? Rent it a second if you get to that right price point? But for that price point to work where you're taking up the space of two, y- you need to get that number. Otherwise, now you're just diminishing the value and you know how it goes from there. But and again, with the, you know, piecemeal part of it, it, we, we do things cautiously because things do go wrong and we don't know what's gonna happen with this economy. And I'd like to make sure that we're in a position where we don't have to, it's not gonna be for sale and it's not gonna go in a different direction. If we only could build one building and things, right now, we haven't broken ground on two buildings because of the cost of lumber. And we're just waiting. And as soon as that cost of lumber goes down, then we can buy the, the building, buy the lumber and move forward. But right now, that sets us back, you know, and time sets us back. So, but we have the, we, we, we can, we can withstand it. So we don't get too over our head.
I think these, these are all, these are all good discussions to have, even if the applicant has to sit through our, our diatribes. It, it's, it's beneficial. We, we need, we need to start hashing these things out. We're, we're talking about a big process, a heavy lift in these comprehensive plan revisions. And, and all of these, all of these projects will contribute to that.
With this much confession, we need a priest, I think.
And a church.
Are you working on one of those next?
But they're, they're looking to sell me another one.
See, that's what I meant.
Yeah, yeah.
Um so, all right, I think we're, we're, I think we've, we've talked about this one enough. Um I, I think it's, it's time for a motion, uh if anyone would want to put one forward.
Um I move uh to approve the prelim- uh preliminary plan um subject to the conditions in the uh staff report.
Right, and, and the recommendations?
And the recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Harry seconds, so we'll go around the room. I'll start with it.
I can start. No, I asked before. I can, I can move and still vote again.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll go around. Manuel?
Hi.
All right, Harry?
Hi.
Hi.
Chris is I and I am an I. Your uh, your minor land development project is approved. The final plan will be delegated to BPD staff. If there are any major revisions, you will have to come back before us, but I don't see that happening either. Thank you very much. That is the last item on our agenda for this evening. So uh we would take a motion to uh
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second. I'll take either one of them. Thank you.